Good evening. The October 10th, 2023 Meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each of their school days, I ask that we now observe a moment of silence. Please join me. I'll now ask Vice Chair Nancy Thrower to read our school board motto. Good evening, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you very much. And this is a lot of pressure because there's a lot of principals here, so I hope I don't make too many reading errors. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. Great job. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove hats and turn off their electronic devices, or put them on silent. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System, or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item, or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Caitlin Koviak, Westport High School. Genesis Muniz Rosado, Bellevue High School.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. And I know that the students, while we are so grateful to have them a part of our board, they also are very, very active at their schools, one of which serving as their student body president, and so there are... Oh, and here she... Oh, she's coming anyway. Okay, yay. See? Just the commitment. It's so great. Here comes Genesis. All right. Moving on, as she comes to the stage. Dr. Gullett, do you have a member of your team who will be helping us with tonight's inspiration and pledge?
Actually, not a member of my team, but I'm going to do that myself. So, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, and Chair, and good evening. It is really an honor and a privilege to have here a very packed house of outstanding principals. It's National Principals Month. And I say that, but I also want to say that it's not about this month, it's not about October. It's about the work and the commitment they do each and every day for our students. It's about the work that they do on the weekends that are supposed to be off their schedule. It's about the evening events and the morning events, and the work that happens in the summer when people wonder what happens in the summer when they're really at their busiest, getting ready for students to return. I am incredibly grateful to say thank you to them here tonight, once again, and publicly in front of the board, because without a very strong principle committed to our student outcomes and student success, and making sure that we reach each and every child where they are, I talk a lot about why, but really, for me, it's more about how. And these principles demonstrate how you meet students where they are, how you work with families in the community, to ensure that, on their watch, they're reaching every child, and they're making sure that children have a choice for their future, and that their future is bright. And I am just very proud of them and very grateful to all of their work and their leadership. And we could not do this without them. It's a very tough job, but it's a very important and critical job for our students. So, if we could ask... If I could have everyone stand?
All the principals. All the principals.
All the principals stand. Thank you all for being here. And Ms. Cruz is here as well. Thank you. And aboard, you'll want to share some thoughts with them, but before you do so, it's my pleasure to introduce Ginger Cruz, who, as you well know, is our Principal of the Year, representing 2223's school year, who's done an outstanding job. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Cruz to share a few words with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Campbell, board members, and Superintendent Gullett... Is that me making the noise? Good evening. It is my honor to be here this evening and share some thoughts about what inspires me to be the principal at Westport High School. One of my students asked me the other day about Hispanic Heritage Month, and why we celebrated it. Before I was able to answer, he shared that he felt like we should celebrate everyone every day. Yes, the month of October is designated for National Principals Month. However, it is a privilege to be a principal every day, and it's something that I never take for granted. I want to congratulate all the principals in Marion County for the great job they do each and every day. A famous and familiar quote from Nelson Mandela states that "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." We get to mold our future, help our staff grow, and develop the whole child. It is a huge responsibility where we must look at the whole picture and focus on each decision, all the way through to impact. A quote from President John Quincy Adams resonated with me. "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you're a leader." I like to help others, whether it's students, teachers, staff, administrators, or parents, become the best version of themselves. Sometimes folks have unnecessary blinders that they need to be opened, or they may feel uncomfortable with the change. As former First Lady Rosalynn Carter quoted, "A leader takes people from where they want to go. A great leader takes people where they don't necessarily want to go, but ought to be." When my freshmen or new students come to the Westport campus for the first time, I want them to recreate themselves beyond their own expectations. We offer many opportunities, from a myriad of art and music programs, a variety of CTE programs that lead to future careers, including our biomedical, logistic, and engineering academies, to name a few, along with rigorous academics. Each student is responsible for creating their path, and we must be there to direct, to support, and to encourage their journey. As a principal, the same is true of my staff. It is important that I recognize the quality of my teachers and my staff, and provide opportunities for their needs and desires. It is also important that we're cognizant of their qualities and encourage continuous growth. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few minutes with you this evening. There is no other field as impactful as education. We get to make a difference each and every day. Thank you. If you can please now stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We always take pictures with students. Could we take a picture with all of our principals? Would they be willing to come forward and take a picture with all of the principals? Mr. Christian, do you think that's doable?
Let's try it.
See, you're not sneaking out that fast.
You're actually... Oh, hello. New microphone. You're actually good where you are. I'm going to ask one thing, though. Anybody want to guess what it is? Please take your name badge off. Here we go. One, two, three, couple more. Congratulations, you've accomplished this task. See you, my friend.
What a fun way to start our meeting. We always get student recognitions, but we don't often have the principal leaders here. So, thank you for that, Dr. Gullett, with the opportunity to recognize them during National Principal Month. That's a wonderful recognition for them. So grateful for all the hard work they do. And so now, Dr. Gullett, I think we have a member of your team who's going to assist us with this evening's recognitions.
We certainly do. Thank you. I would like to bring Dr. Livinggood forward, and she is going to introduce our Supervisor of Elections, who we all know very well, and has a special presentation for one of our students in high school. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. Chair Campbell, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett, and of course, Genesis, thank you for being with us for your final evening. So, thank you. I have the privilege of introducing Mr. Wilcox, who is on the podium this evening. As Dr. Gullett just stated, he is our Supervisor of Elections, and we are proud that he represents all of us, and he works so closely with our high schools to encourage voter registration. And that's so important, and I know he spends... We've all seen this firsthand. He spends hours with our students in the classrooms, really going through the importance of local politics, all the way up through at the national level. So, I'm excited to bring Mr. Wilcox to the podium, so he can provide a special recognition this evening.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. It's always such a great honor and privilege to do this. I'm here this evening for our hour... If you notice, I said "hour" because it's the Supervisor of Elections, as well as partnership with the school board. So, I'm here this evening to present our 7th Annual Voter Registration Challenge. And as you know, a little bit of history on this. Starlee from my office began this program seven years ago, and in that time, we've had won numerous awards over the participations that we've had, the improvements to the program, the outreach that this program has provided us as citizens, as well as to our students. To date, this program has collected almost 2,900 voter registration applications over those seven years. So, it's been an extremely successful program. I know in years past, prior to this program, we would be lucky to get 20, maybe 25 registrations. So, now we're getting several hundred per year through this program, and we are extremely proud of it. So, without any further ado, I would like to announce our 7th Annual High School Voter Registration Challenge winner, and that winner is North Marion High School, with Mr. Hill, the student government teacher, and Carol Sales is our principal. Please give them a round of applause. This is Mr. Hill, and North Marion's second win in a row. They have won...
Third.
I was going to say third out... Three out of four years. Much more... Yeah, don't let me forget anything. Much more, and we'll just kind of almost permanently place it up at North Marion High School. So, we're extremely proud of that. They had over a 72% participation rate of those who were eligible to be registered and actually became registered. So, I would like to very carefully present this award to Mr. Hill. Thank you, sir, for all you do for us as registered voters here in Marion County. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Hill and Ms. Sales, we're going to come down and take another picture. Congratulations, North Marion High School.
I was trying to find her in the cafeteria.
Goodness.
Thank you again, Supervisor of Elections, Wilcox. Ms. Starlee Ard, thank you so much. And to the North Marion High School team, we're so appreciative and grateful for all that work that you've put in to ensure that we have this next generation being registered to vote. Such an important right, we should never take for granted. Dr. Gullett, would you like to make a recommendation on this evening's agenda?
I would, but I have one more introduction, if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Another recognition?
That's quite all right. I have an introduction. I'd like to have Anna Williams Jones stand up. She is our new Director of Exceptional Student Education. And just a little bit of background, she has 27 years of experience, and has worked in four other school districts in Florida, and one outside of the state of Florida. Most recently, she worked at the Florida Department of Education, supporting professional learning and ESE and mental health initiatives. And the team found a very strong candidate, has a lot of background and expertise in this area, and we're pleased to introduce her to the board and to the community, and we're glad you're here.
Welcome. Welcome. We're grateful to have you, and looking forward to working with you as we proceed throughout the rest of the school year. Your expertise is valued, for sure. Welcome aboard. Okay, Dr. Gullett.
I'm pleased to introduce the agenda. Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 10th, 2023 School Board Meeting, with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-20.1, D-20.2, and D-20.3 that have been placed under discussion, and C-18.5 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, pulled agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second by Reverend Cummings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 7th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve the September 7th minutes.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 8th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 12th, 2023 School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 21st, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve the September 21st minutes.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower. Second by Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 21st, 2023 Special School Board Meeting?
Double. We just said the 21st.
Actually, we did the administrative briefing and work session, and now we're doing...
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. That's fine. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 26th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 29th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second by Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. We had a lot of meetings in September. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for getting us caught up on all of our minutes. And speaking of Ms. Martinez, good evening. Can I have also the proof of publication for this evening, please?
The notice for the October 10th, 2023 Board Meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on September 29th, 2023. The proof of publication has been attached in board document, the proof of publication.
Thank you so much. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers. A written summary of these procedures, along with public speaker forms, are available from the table in the lobby. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Thirty minutes have been allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice on screen to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Presentations to the school board are governed by the following protocol. Speaker presentations on specific agenda items or matters in which the school board customarily takes action pertaining to Marion County Public Schools will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order in which such requests are received by the school board's assistant. No one will be permitted to make presentation unless he or she has submitted a fully completed request form to the school board's assistant prior to 5:40 p.m. on the date in which they wish to speak. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. The use of any student's name, except by his or her parents or guardians, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families, is strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6 and Section 770.03 Florida statutes, statements concerning an identified individual, other than the speaker or his or her child, must be submitted to the superintendent in writing, a minimum of 24 hours before the school board meeting. Statements made at the meeting must follow the submitted statement verbatim. The school board will not permit anyone to speak who has not followed this procedure, and will end the presentation if the speaker deviates from the text, except in response to questions. The school board has the right to refuse to broadcast or record statements which it reasonably considers to be libelous, slanderous, slanderous, or defamatory. The school board has the right to provide copies of statements to the person who is the subject of the statement, or his attorney, or other designated agent. The fact that the school board permits a person to speak following submission of his or her statement does not in any way suggest the school board concurs with, endorses, or approves the contents of the statement. The school board is simply permitting the person to make a public statement at a public meeting, and takes no responsibility whatever for its contents, results, or consequences. Each speaker agrees to indemnify and hold the school board harmless for many claims against the school board, any damages, losses, or expenses incurred, which are caused in fact or law by the presentation and content of the speaker's statement. Audio and visual presentations are permitted if provided to the school board's assistant at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, and if compatible with current audio/video equipment available in the school board room. Audiovisual presentations will be limited to a total of five minutes. Handouts are permitted if they comply with the rules provided herein. Based on time considerations of the meeting, the school board may, by majority, rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, or schedule public comment in a different position on the agenda, or eliminate public comment time altogether. Persons can request to speak to the school board without being televised. Non-televised presentations will be held after the conclusion of all televised portions of the meeting. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do, Madam Chair. We have four... Two speakers. Ms. Jamie Niswonger.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Niswonger. Last name is N-I-S-W-O-N-G-E-R. Okay, so I'm here again for the third meeting in a row, but my concerns have changed. Today, I'm here to speak about Senate House Bill 256 regarding unions. So, I submitted a public records request on behalf of that to get information, and the response I got back was that you guys no longer have that information because you are no longer deducting dues from employees' paychecks. That's great, because that's in there. But in that Senate House bill, you guys are also supposed to get reports, so when they go to file their certification or recertification with the state, on that same day that they file that, they have to provide the employer, the public employer, a copy. So, when that's provided to you guys, that should also become public record. So, that would be helpful. You have lots of unions that have been teetering under 30%, and I do think it's going to be very hard for them to get over 60%. The other concern I have is that when these unions came out to the employees in their workplace, they made comments. The comments that came directly from these union people said, "We need you to sign this paper. You're not going to be charged anything. Sign this paper that you want representation." And then, the second page of that paper that they were signing clearly had union dues. If you look in the Senate House bill, it states that the 60% must be made up of paying members, not just people signing that they want free representation. There's not a single union that offers free representation. The employees were being misled to sign a piece of paper that says, "For no cost, if you sign this paper, you're going to help the union stay." So, it was very misleading what they were telling the employees. There are also employees out there that believe if the union does not get 60%, that they're going to lose their health insurance coverage, which I've seen no indication that employees are going to be losing health insurance coverage, but that's what employees are being made to believe. There's also a problem that the union was going around with papers that were strictly in English. We have employees in Marion County Public Schools that do not speak, read, or write English. They speak Spanish, and who knows what other languages we might have. The unions did not come with any papers printed in any other language, nor did they come with anybody else that could speak any other languages. Spanish-speaking employees were given paperwork in English and told to sign here. They didn't know what they were signing. They had no clue. I was in the same room with some employees. I've seen this. I was listening to these union employees. When I raised concern, they couldn't answer, just other than, "There are no fees." Yet, there are fees. We all know there's fees associated with the unions. So, that's one of my concerns, is that employees are being tricked into signing papers based on claims that are inaccurate. So, I would caution the board to review that House bill, and review what's going on out in the workplaces regarding how these unions are trying to get papers signed, and what papers are being handed out. I would look at those papers, too. I would look at those papers, too. The second concern I have is you guys had a work session, and in that work session, I believe it might have been your last work session, you discussed transportation. I have quite a few concerns arising from that. One concern was bringing up that you would like to purchase passenger vans to have non-CDL drivers transporting children. Within the last year, you guys had work sessions, and in those work sessions, we also discussed transportation. One of those work sessions specifically, it was discussed on why Marion County Public Schools has not used vans in a long time to transport children. And the main concern there is safety. Children are a lot safer in a school bus than they are in a passenger van. The injuries sustained that can be sustained from driving in a passenger van are going to be much higher than they are when they are in a school bus, understanding that you can get a lot more kids transported around. I don't know. I would ease on the side of caution, looking at all of the requirements for any individual wishing to transport children. I think that lowering the standard is going to cause a huge concern for safety for these children, so I would review that. The other thing I would review is when you're sitting here talking about how late your school buses are, you have parents calling in and complaining because they missed the school bus, not the school bus missed them, and you send out a school bus to pick up one kid. Now that school bus spent 25 minutes to go and pick up one kid because the kid or the parent missed the school bus. You now made another route 30 minutes late over one kid, and in reality, the bus was there. The bus was on time, but you're trying to do a courtesy, you know, to the parent. We don't have time to be doing courtesy runs like that. So I would caution, if you look at other avenues, you can make up what you need to without spending the amount of money that was requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Niswonger.
Ms. Deborah Lee Coffey.
Just waiting for a timer.
Oh, no, it's fine. You can say your name and spell it, and then it starts.
Oh, Deborah Coffey, just like you drink in the morning, just not spelled the same. It's E-Y instead of E-E at the end. Deborah, D-E-B-R-A.
Thank you.
Thank you. Protecting children is not political. My name is Deb. I'm a Marion County mom who also happens to be the L in the LGBT. I'm the founder of an amazing international community called Protectors of Innocence. We're a group of LGBT people and allies who are standing up to protect children in all communities. I want to thank the Marion County School Board. I have never once felt discriminated against or unwanted here, except by my own LGBT community and allies. My children have not been treated any differently because they have two moms. My children have drawn pictures of their family. I have gone on field trips. My wife and I show up together at open houses and parent nights. Our kid even did a shout-out to us on the morning announcements. This push for inclusion is not about inclusion at all. Why such a focus on LGBT? No autism flag or cancer awareness, no Christian Day or Muslim, or better yet, ADHD Day, where all the neurodivergent children can bounce on exercise balls while learning. I knew, I know that if I seen that representation, it certainly would have helped me pay more attention in class, but we know this isn't about inclusion. Groups want to indoctrinate your children on the guise of my community, where they want your children introduced to ideologies like "You were born in the wrong body," or "Having males use your daughter's restroom." We can't allow gender-neutral bathrooms, but perhaps the solution exists with a single-space stall. I feel that is the middle ground. Now, for some of you, it won't be enough because you use the transitioning and indoctrinating of children as a cover for your blatant transphobia and homophobia. I hear the same thing, increasing suicide rates. What's odd to me is that there is countless studies saying otherwise. According to the Gender Identity Development Service, from 2010 to 2020, four patients were known to die of suicide out of 15,000 patients, including those on a waiting list. This gives us a suicide rate of 0.03%. This is in keeping with the suicide rate for use with other mental health. What I discovered was there was a much higher rate of suicide in youth with bipolar, depression, schizophrenia, and autism than those with gender dysphoria. So why such a focus on LGBT when clearly the focus should be mental health, which would also include those who are suffering from gender dysphoria? What happened to teach a child to love themselves even their flaws? There has been an increase of over 5,000% of trans-identifying youth, mainly young girls. The majority of Americans support us, but more than ever, we have been noticing a decline. Why do you think that is, community? Because we are asked to leave the kids alone. Inclusivity is merely exclusivity, because in your attempt to be so focused on one group of people, you leave out the silent majority. I stand with other parents pushing back against the radical ideologies that these groups and orgs are pushing onto our innocent children. I stand beside with my adult, transsexual brothers and sisters, knowing that if we continue teaching these dangerous ideologies, that it's going to backfire and turn on trans adults, which in my opinion would be 100% anti-American. What I don't understand is school is a place for all our country. No one is excluded from receiving an education. If you make your school inclusive for LGBT, I should also see inclusion for the Christian kid, the neuro kid, the autistic kid, the foster kid, the poor kid. You get where I'm going with this. We teach our children to honor others in school and at home. We teach them to be kind to people who are different. But no, we don't need LGBT-inclusive schools. We need schools to teach our children math and language arts and science. I would suggest schools focus more on mental health of the students. I'm gay. I don't need a red carpet for you to kiss my feet. I'm no longer part of this community. Just like my dear friend and colleague Jonathan stated, we are certainly not a community. We are more divided than ever. The second we started breaking our flag apart is the second we broke apart. We were all united under that flag, under that cause, and the second we started giving new classifications, subdivisions, you name it, we no longer existed as a community. We turned into tribes, and now we are fighting each other. We've harnessed the idea there is no limitation to identity and sexuality. Now people are classifying themselves as minor-attracted persons attaching themselves to our community because, again, there is no limitation to sexuality and identity. We as a community and outside of our community must work together to find a solution to protect the children.
Time. Sorry. Time.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Ms. Martinez, did we have any other public speakers this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the 2023-2025 District Safety Loss Prevention Manual?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower. Second by Ms. Conrad. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The primary goal of the District Safety Loss Prevention Manual is to assist in providing a safe and healthy environment for students, employees, and all who visit our district facilities, and to prevent students and employee accidents causing injuries and illnesses. Monetary savings are realized by reducing costly accidental injuries due to the effective safety programs. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the 2023 through 2025 District Safety Loss Prevention Manual? Seeing none. Board, is there any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. We have a motion to approve consent agenda items C10.1 through C19.1, with the exception of items D20.1, D20.2, D20.3, that have been placed under discussion, and item C18.5 that has been pulled and placed under discussion for pulled agenda item. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. We have a motion to approve the grant award Marion County Hospital District.
Motion to approve the grant award.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, I understand you have something to add to this item.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, we place this item under discussion because, for a couple reasons. The first item is that you may notice there's a reduction in this direct grant application, and that's due to the restructuring from the hospital district. It is not in any way a reduction in the support that we're receiving through the hospital district, and so it's another opportunity to say thank you for all of the support services that we're providing and our partnership with the hospital district, who's really taken on a whole different turn with us in our journey and how we meet the needs of our students. And so I'd like to have Dr. Livinggood come forward to share some of the details of that pertaining to this grant, if I could. And with Dr. Livinggood is Deb Velez from the hospital district, and we're really appreciative for her being here with us tonight, and I thank her personally for all the work that, collaboration that we've been doing very regularly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any chance, anytime we have a chance to speak about FANS in the hospital district, we are happy to do so because at this point, the FANS initiative has now reached every Marion County Public School and 10 private institutions. This year, the FANS program has been allocated a budget of $1,171,900 for both public and private schools. So that is just worth a huge round of applause, and so I have, as Dr. Gullett stated, there's been a mismatch in our fiscal years, and so the only reason there's a reduction in what you see in the MOU is because of that restructuring and the finances. But I asked the Chief Operating Officer, Mrs. Deborah Velez, to be here this evening so we could publicly thank her, because I know Dr. Gullett wanted to do so, and she is here to answer any questions you have about the hospital district and the FANS initiative.
Well, I know, I don't have any, good to see you. Good to see you, Deb. I don't have any questions, just comments. I'm so grateful. When I first became a board member, you and I and Mr. Berman had some conversation about, "The school district needs to be recognizing you for all the things that you're doing." So I'm grateful that ever since that time where we do take this time to say thank you to the Marion County Hospital District, because the partnership that we have with FANS is, my children have benefited, children all throughout this entire county have, public and private, and I'm just grateful. Thank you so much for seeing the value in making sure that fitness and nutrition are a part of everything we do every day in our schools, and we couldn't do what we do without you. So thank you, Marion County Hospital District, and specifically to you, Ms. Velez.
Thank you.
Board, any additional comments? Dr. James.
I just want to say thank you. My, I believe wholeheartedly that learning extends outside of the classroom, and my daughter got to visit the FANS garden recently. She came home to tell me all the things about the soil and way beyond what I can even begin to try and comprehend. And it's nice to know that all of our students in all of our schools are getting opportunities to extend their learning experiences like that. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next year, you guys are going to be the winners of the STEP challenge, correct?
Uh, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. I don't think we realized that we weren't the winners, so somehow we have to figure, I mean, we found out after the fact, but somehow we have to figure out how to track that differently, because I didn't know we weren't winning, or we would have gotten our shoes on a little tighter. Yes. Any other board member say anything?
Okay. Yeah, Genesis.
So, FANS, I just wanted to say, like, it's really important because as we go on and talk, and like going in more to like technology, like children are more used to like sitting down and just going on their iPads and, well, like, I remember when I was growing up, I would go outside and just like experience the world, but as I've seen, like I work in a restaurant, so like seeing kids, just like instead of interacting with their families, they're just like on their phones, like screen time has really increased, but like making an effort to really talk about fitness and nutrition in the schools and really make an effort for like, "Yeah, you should be going outside. You should be doing this." Like, and also like just talking more about it is really, really beneficial for kids, especially because they don't realize that what they're doing is going to like really, really hurt them in the future, because right now, we're young and it doesn't really show, but if you're not used to moving, how are you going to do it when you're older? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Genesis. Thank you again, Ms. Velez. We just greatly appreciate all that the hospital district does for us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I add one other item?
Sure.
I reference this, but I want to make sure that the board is fully aware, and I want to thank you again, Ms. Velez, because we meet regularly, and members of my team meet. We've had trustees there, so it's not just about a partnership on paper, and it's not just a monetary exchange. We are having collaboration and dialogue about what's working, what's not. We talk about outcomes for students. We talk about data, and we talk about what we can do better. And so I appreciate that this is a very active continuing conversation, and already we've made over the last even two years some, I think, pretty strong adjustments to meet those student needs. And so want to thank you and thank your whole team for those very authentic conversations and dialogue. So thanks for your flexibility.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So, Board, we do have to take official action on this item, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you again. May I have a motion to approve the professional services selection recommendation for construction management services for Liberty Middle School's 16 Classroom Wing Edition, Project 24-103?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower. Second by Ms. Conrad. Dr. James, I understand that we might need to have you take action on this item or not?
Uh, yes. This is another one of our contractor items for Liberty Middle School. So this is the Liberty Middle School wing, and I sat in on the interviews for the contractor for this, and it's been a pleasure. We have more interviews, I don't know, Thursday maybe? And then I think we're almost done with kind of this batch, and then our money tree will need to bloom a little bit more, but we're doing really great work. This is another great contractor, and I'm excited for them to help expand Liberty Middle School, and looking at diagrams and seeing where it's going to go and how the space will function. But the best part about it is that Mr. Williams was a part of the process the whole time. And so I think the best part about this process, and it's been a while since we've done it, is that Mr. Knight and Ms. Dobbins and their entire department bring in the principal or the person who is going to be a part of living in this space, and they are an integral part of the conversation and make sure that their vote counts. So I will be recusing myself from the vote, but it's a great choice.
Thank you, Dr. James. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. We have a motion to approve the revised school start times for Marion Technical Institute students for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower. Second by Ms. Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have any additional information on this item, please?
I do. Just briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Dobbins is coming forward. This item, Board members, is a follow-up to the work session on Thursday, October 5th, regarding the ways that we can improve our on-time delivery and transportation, and so Ms. Dobbins is here to provide an update of what that looks like with our, what we call our start and stop times, our bell schedules. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Dr. Campbell, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. As we discussed last Thursday in our work session, we were digging into looking at the bell schedule for MTI. We had some transportation staff work all weekend, over the weekend, to run simulation routes to see what the best time would be and see what that impact would also entail. So we proposed today to move the Marion Technical Institute Alternative Program to a 9:15 start with an ending time of 3:45. We would leave the MTI dual enrollment portion the same and also the work study. By making this move, it will free six bus drivers to go run different routes of open routes or late routes that we are currently experiencing in other schools. With this, we would look to implement this change on November 6. This will give us the time that we need to, one, change the routes, but mostly to make contact with parents and guardians to ensure that they've made their plans at home and that these kids are ready for the bus on November 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins. Is there any, any comments? Okay.
There is.
Dr. James? My only question is, are, have we determined the workday duty day for the teachers, or is that still going to be forthcoming? I know that some of the employees obviously would like to seek clarification on what their duty day will change. So that was my only question.
Yes, so that's done internally at each site, so the principal will be involved with setting that time, but it should lead to a situation where there's not much change in totality, because you're looking at bringing the students in later. That means the morning time becomes the planning time.
Okay.
I don't have the actual times for you until the principal has time to look into that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Reverend Cummings.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins, for...
Um, thank you, Ms. Dobbins, for this. I wasn't at, I wasn't privileged to be at that meeting, the work session when we discussed this. But I do appreciate the fact that there was a huge discussion, I did hear the, the meeting, there was a huge discussion about transportation, trying to find some solutions to the problems, the issues that we're already having. I, I just want to make sure, and I saw it, that the effective date is going to be November 6. And it said for, we were pushing out that far so that we can have time to let the impacted parents and guardians know. But also, I want to add something to that, to make sure that our staff, who has to adjust their schedules and who also have to pick up their kids and those things, that they also would be affected by this as well. So that gives consideration for them. So I do want to make, make, make sure that we note that, that we did take into consideration staff also, and making sure that we went out to that November 6 date.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Dobbins. May I have a motion to approve the revised job description for Senior Executive Director of Operations 1.67, formerly known as Executive Director of Operations and Emergency Management?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Reverend Cummings, I understand that you pulled this item and would like to have further discussion.
I did. Um, I noticed in our consent agenda that we approved several revised job descriptions. I think a couple were in relation to Senior Executive Director. This one is a little bit different than the others that we approved, in that they all pretty much read the same, as far as qualifications, education, and different things of such KSAs. However, I have, I have an issue with this one. And I did discuss it with our HR director. And this one is concerning operations and emergency management. There is a, there is a lining that says doctoral degree preferred. This one I have an issue with, because when we put that doctoral degree preferred on this job description, yes, we're trying to align all the job descriptions up as the same, but some don't need to be lined up the same. Because I think that what this one does is, we may possibly exclude candidates for that position in the future, because if we ever add the filter to that, that job description, or job advertisement, that filter would push people out that probably would not have a doctoral degree. This is more vocational type position. You could have a person that has worked in, in, in this line, because it's talking about custodial transportation. You have a person that have worked 20, 25 years, never have got, have got a master degree, but not doctoral degree. And I think this would do some of our people an injustice by having that, that in there. So that is my concern. I'm hoping the other board members will look at that and see it. Because when you look at the complete job description of this, there's really not a need to have a doctoral, or even to have doctoral preferred in that degree, in, in this job description. Just lining it up, just to line up, just so it be, I can see on the curriculum side, I can see on the instruction side, but not on this one. Not on this one.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Additional comments, Board? Dr. James?
I guess my only question, I'm assuming that you spoke with Ms. Morant, which is why you're saying aligning? Is that, okay. Because I was just going to have Ms. Morant confirm that the reason it's in there is because all of the other senior executive director job descriptions have doctoral degree preferred? Okay.
And, and I did some checking around the state. Similar positions like this don't require a doctoral degree, especially for like-sized districts with Marion. It, I think, I think this just puts a hindrance on us possibly getting some great candidates for this position. The person that's, it's, it's not required now. I, I just can't see a reasoning behind it. And even other HR professionals don't think it's not, it's not necessarily a best practice, or it's not a bad practice. It's just something that we don't necessarily have to do at this time. So I will, I will be voting no on this one, so.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question on the, the filtering, and I would like confirmation that if someone is searching, that they would not see this position with the statement in there as written. Because if that is true, then that is concerning. I, I tend to love job descriptions, and we did one for our first appointed superintendent that was intentionally much more open-ended, because we wanted to make sure that we captured unique candidates with unique skills and, and experiences. And while I'm all about being very specific, I think sometimes you can specific yourself into a corner. So I would be okay approving it as is, as long as I had confirmation that doctoral degree preferred would not shade out somebody that was searching specifically. So I don't know if that answered, if that can be answered tonight or not.
From my understanding, Vice Chair Thrower, once, depending on how many applicants you would get, you would look to reduce the pool. And once you try to reduce the pool, you would add filters. That would be, probably be one of the first filters that you put on there to reduce that pool. So you could lose a quality candidate that has been in the field for numerous years, but just because they don't have a doctoral degree, they could be weeded out. And we're, we're going into a construction phase right now. And this all lines up with some of that stuff as well.
Vice Chair?
Thank you. So apparently I misunderstood your definition of the, the filter. I was looking at it from, I'm looking for a job, and I put in, you know, what I'm looking for, and that that would have, at that point, screened it out. But I think what I'm hearing you say is that when we get, or when the pool is created, and they start whittling down maybe who they're going to interview, that that may end up, the doctoral degree preferred may come into play. And I don't know how I feel about it at that point, because preferred is not required. And if somebody has crackerjack experience in the field, that would be my argument as a potential interviewer. Hey, it says preferred, not required, for the reason that I just said. So.
By that, by that point, that person may not have even put in because they see that doctoral preferred. It, it's, when you, when you see stuff on there, you're saying, okay, preferred, you're, if it was me, and I don't have a doctorate, I'm saying, okay, they're really looking for someone with a doctoral degree. I could put in for it, but chances are, they're looking for someone. So if there's a candidate that has a doctoral degree, I already know I'm weeded out.
Yep. Point taken.
Additional comments, Board? Personally, I, I could go either way on this. I do think at some point, when we get to a salary level of what this is, and we are in the education business, I, I understand the concern, though, that someone in operations, who has an operations background, more so than the curriculum side of the house, might not have that subsequent certification or education. So I can, I can see both ways on it. With it just saying doctorate preferred, I would lean towards leaving it as is to align with our other senior executive director positions, seeing that it is just preferred. And I actually just used a quote the other day, I'm going to misquote it terribly, but there's a, a book by Sheryl Sandberg called Lean In, and it talks about people who apply for jobs, whether they feel 100% qualified or 30% qualified. And people make decisions based on how they feel about a job description. And perhaps it would weed a candidate out, but that might speak more to the candidate than it does of the job description, if that book's quote has anything to do with it. So I would lean towards just consistency, because our other senior executive director positions have doctoral degree preferred. It doesn't mean that all of the folks in those positions have doctoral degrees. Right now, we have several senior executive directors, a couple have them, a couple of don't, and that's fine. And so, but, you know, that hasn't changed us putting a job description saying that differently, just because someone in the position doesn't have a doctoral degree. We still have people in those positions that don't. So I would lean, for consistency's sake, I, I believe I heard Vice Chair Thrower say that, too, for consistency's sake, to have it aligned with the other senior executive director positions. So I'll be voting in favor of it. But I don't know if there's any additional discussion, or if we're ready to call the vote.
Unless someone else has something.
Anybody have, yes, Ms. Conrad?
Just really, the only comment I have is that I, I too could go either way. But thinking about local businesses and people that are doing this very successfully outside of the school district, I cannot think of one that has a doctorate. So I just don't want to pigeonhole ourselves in recruiting good people, because I, I don't feel that it is a necessity.
Thank you. Dr. James?
Sure. I, I think including it as a preferred, but not a requirement, leaves it up for someone with 20 years of experience running a multimillion dollar company to come and apply. And having been a candidate before, you know, there are the people who just apply for the job where it's posted, and there are the people who print their resume and walk down to the office and hand it in and shake the hand. And, and so I would venture to guess that a candidate who is, doesn't have a doctorate degree, but goes above and beyond because they think they're an eligible candidate, is going to get an interview. And I'm sure if we ask Ms. Morant, how many candidates are applying for our jobs in general, the cup is not runneth over. So probably most of the people who are minimally qualified and meeting our expectations are going to get an interview, because there isn't an overwhelming amount of people who are applying with doctorate degrees for our top senior level management jobs. So it, it doesn't bother me, but I also have a doctorate. So maybe that's part of the reason why it doesn't bother me. I don't know. But, so, you know, I could have a skewed perspective on it, and I can acknowledge that. But for me, I think it's, I, I would, I believe that our leaders will continue to interview all candidates who they feel are a good fit for this community. So that's all I got.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion on this item, do we, I'm sorry?
I do have one more.
Oh, Vice Chair Thrower has one more comment.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Because I'm trying to come to terms with this. And, and I continue to read down under experience, and, and this helps me, where it says, minimum of five years, successful school and/or district leadership experience, and/or equivalent combination of education and/or training and experience deemed equal or superior to the foregoing requirements. So I think that clinches it for me. And I would like to think that somebody that's interviewing for a job at this level is going to have the confidence to say, hey, I don't have a doctorate degree, but I sure can run circles around the rest of this stuff. Those are the kind of people we want. So if that wasn't there, as far as the experience, then I would have much more difficulty voting yes on this. I'm good.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four one.
Good discussion.
Yes, thank you for the discussion. Moving on to committee reports, the, actually, I'll do our board meeting reminders. So the next administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for October 19th, 2023, and another administrative briefing and work session will be held on October 26th, 2023. Moving on to comments and committee reports, anything from Board Clerk's Office, Ms. Martinez?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything from Legal Attorney Powers?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, I did want to mention this, and I did when the principals were here, I forgot. I was told that our team calculated 344 years of principal experience of those that represent our schools. 344 years of principal experience of those who are sitting in the role at our district right now. So I think that says a lot. It is also National School Lunch Week. So I'm going to be out in some schools tomorrow and thanking, continue to thank our wonderful team and all the work they're doing to serve our students, to ensure that they're healthy and fed, and so they're prepared to learn. Last but not least, Monday, October 16th, is teacher workday. There is no school for students, as we're quickly moving through our school year and concluding the first quarter already. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Dr. James?
Hi, good evening. So I want to start, I, Board Member Conrad said it, and it's, it made, seeing all of those principals here in one room, it's like, I want to do it like, I don't know, twice, twice a year at least. It's just so nice to see, it's like when I go to like the School Choice Expo, or you go to the Hiring Fair, and you get to just see so many amazing people in one space. It really is so awesome. I was with a principal today, who's just in his second year of being a principal. And then in a room tonight, you have some individuals who have been principals for, I don't know if Ms. Sandy was here, I didn't see her, but, so I missed her. But, you know, we have some principals who've probably, I don't, approaching 30 years of principal leadership. And it's, they're all doing such a great job every single day. I always take some time to acknowledge our administrative personnel items that we approve in the consent agenda. So both Ms. Godwin and Ms. Schrader are growing from instructional coaches to assistant principals, Ms. Godwin at Lake Weir Middle and Ms. Schrader at Spar Elementary. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And also, Ms. Becky Rora officially retired in this board packet. She has been a staple in our community and in the transportation department, and I just wanted to take time to acknowledge the service that she has provided to this school district. And I spoke with her on the phone, just, maybe not this week, but the end of last week, and I said, you know, if you get bored, we can find a place for you. So I, I think there's a lot of great things happening. As I'm visiting schools, we're having great conversations. Transportation is something that we talk about a lot. I spoke with Dr. Livinggood earlier today to try and just come up with some creative solutions to try and get, meet, meet us where we are right now, while always striving for 100% on-time arrival, but acknowledging that we're falling short of that right now. And so how can we get direct instruction to students in a, maybe a more creative way? So we're always working on that. Thursday's work session, I offered some questions to Attorney Powers regarding the impact fee, and I followed up with him a little bit. As I watched it back, I, I was left with a few questions. And so I just wanted to clarify some things, or maybe collectively, the two of us clarify some things for the Board, because I, I felt like I shared remarks as well as Attorney Powers. And I want to make sure that we don't, because of sunshine, have a lot of opportunity for us to collective have conversations. And so sometimes Board Member comments just seems to be where it falls. So one of the things that I had mentioned was the question regarding, can the county adopt the fee and the city of Ocala not adopt the fee? And so I will yield to you if I can?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you for the opportunity. Yes, it is the county's role to assess and levy the amount of the impact fees. However, the, there must be a collection mechanism. Currently, because we're amending the former impact fee, that's in existence. We have a collection mechanism, mechanism in existence. And with our new interlocal agreement, we would also be able to do the same. However, if there were any kind of dispute, there's a mode within our interlocal agreements which does allow for dispute resolution. I don't mean to imply that there's a dispute that's sort of on the table or anything like that, because there's not. Every, every discussion that I've had with my counterparts from the city or county has been cordial and productive. However, when it comes to the imposition, the impact fee, it's not something that requires separate approval from both the city council and the, and the county commission. However, if the county, if the city council decides that they would not wish to impose the impact fee and collect and, or wish to exit the interlocal agreement for that issue, then at that point, I would concur with Guy Minter's, the Matthew Minter, the county attorney, his memorandum that he released on August 8th, which indicates that it does need to be collected countywide. So although it wouldn't need to be a separate approval process where we go to first the county and then the city, the city would have the ability. They do have, they have skin in the game. They have a, they have a stake in this. And so the city would need to be able to have whatever concerns they have addressed and met. In keeping with that, we did have a meeting among the attorneys in which the city suggested that there were a couple of additional categories that they wished to address. I indicated that if we could find out if the data was available for that, we would certainly bring that to the Board's attention. When we, when they notified us what those, the When we, when they notified us what those additional pullouts were, that was what I did. I went to our study consultant and said, "Does this exist?" Currently, that data doesn't exist. It's collected differently between the city and the county. And so I responded back to the city via the, well, I responded back to my counterpart at the city, Mr. Sexton, to indicate, "Here are potential concerns. This data doesn't exist in that format. We might have to, we might have to do something additional. Plus, we also have the consideration that there might be a discrepancy if we were to pull it out for one category within multifamily, but not pull it out for another category, say with single-family residents." Because of that, I wanted to give them an opportunity to give me some input as to what their take on it was and whether that would be a request that they either wish to elaborate on, withdraw, discuss. And I have not yet heard back from my counterpart at the city regarding that. So in the interim, what I am moving forward with is there were two primary issues when, at our joint meeting, the sort of marching orders we got at the joint meeting were for us to pull out the additional two categories from the original three and for the attorneys to meet to ensure legality. So we did that. We pulled out the additional two categories. Then we discussed the legality issue, and one legality issue was, is there a, we'll call it a Santa Rosa problem, a dual rational nexus test problem? And does that exist? And if so, how do we fix it? Well, there's some question as to whether it exists. I particularly don't believe that it does. However, it, Santa Rosa County is very differently situated than us. So in the, in an abundance of caution, however, there is a significantly, I won't say easy, but there is a fix for exactly that kind of thing, and that is to, to set educational benefit districts as I outlined at the last board meeting. And so we have an upcoming work session to discuss those. So that's the legality portion. The other portion would be as to additional categories to be considered. And I outlined that different counties do this differently. Of course, some counties do it by square footage. We've been through some of those discussions before. Some counties do that via a number, I think it was 14, in 14 categories within Broward County. Some go back to original three and just keep it within those. The discussion now would have to be as to what the board's pleasure is, as to how we wish to consider and whether we wish to have Binesh do additional study regarding additional categories, those requested by the city. And if so, that will take some time. I'm sure it'll take some time because we're going to have to find the data that is apples-to-apples data between the city and the county as to multifamily. City currently uses studio apartments, or sorry, studio multifamily versus a number of bedrooms, and that's not replicated within the county systems. And as we found from the property appraiser, that's, that's again, not an apples-to-apples comparison, and it may be difficult to get at that data. Of course, that's not my role, so I can't really comment on how difficult it may be. But that is something then that our study consultant would need to take that data once it was isolated, compare it to the timeframes that are identical within our original study, add it in, and then do additional, do additional analysis. And so the concern that I expressed was, is this it? Because each time we look at additional requests, then there's, you know, we started off with our study, and we have, we have some other requests for, for additional categories. The city has outlined its additional categories that it would like to consider. There could also be other requests for other additional categories. So that may present a difficulty in the future for the school board in going back again and again to our study consultant. But at any rate, the study consultant did an analysis, gave us a product. That product would be inadequate at this point to meet the demands of what the additional categories would be, thus required additional board approval for additional study. And I can't tell you personally what the, what the study consultant would need, how long it would take, or how much it would cost. And so those are factors that will need to be presented by the board, to the board. I've met with people from operations in order to come to some idea of what that may be, and the study consultants are going to be asked about what the categories, what they believe they would need to do in order to accompany such an estimate. If that were going to happen, though, that would have to require, it would require the board's determination that we wanted them to move forward in a particular direction. And if that direction was to consider the two additional categories of multifamily housing that the city has requested, then that would be the direction to go. Knowing that there may be in the future another interested party, another municipality, a builder, any number of people, who may wish to replicate the same and say, "Well, here's, here's another couple that we want you to consider." That's not a legal issue. That's an issue of, can we pull out those additional categories and look at them? We can, provided the data are there and provided that the consultant has the adequate time and resources to, to do that. So that's going to be a board decision. I believe that's going to be addressed, since we in the interim are also working on our educational benefit districts. I think that in the interim, we'll have additional discussion to be brought to the board at that work session regarding what that ask would take.
So in summary, if I may, if the city does not vote up the ordinance, the county cannot collect the ordinance. Yes or no?
No. That, your question is not phrased quite right. That's not accurate because the city doesn't have to vote it up. It's already, it doesn't go before the city. There is a connection, a collection mechanism in place under an older inter-local agreement that already exists. So in other words, if we had been collecting it all along, then the city would have had to make the decision to exit out of that collection. So it doesn't go, we don't take it to the county and then take it to the city.
So you're saying?
We take it to the county, and then the-
The city's not voting on it?
The city may vote on anything it wishes to vote on, but what I'm saying is that it doesn't require that. It would require that they, that they go along with it, I suppose, but it's not something where the city, the city doesn't have to take an active role in voting it up or down. The city has to simply agree to participate in an inter-local agreement for the collection, which does require their, their consent or their, their willingness to join into the process. However, it's not as though this ordinance is approved through the county, and then the, it also has to be approved by the city. The city will have to approve its own land use changes or comprehensive plan changes in order to accommodate it.
So if the city is disagreeable and does not want to collect the impact fee, can the county collect the impact fee?
The collection, yes, but the expenditure, no, as per Mr. Minter's. And so essentially, it would be a null, it would be annuity. We wouldn't be able to.
Okay. So, so, thank you for the clarification. So ultimately, if the city is not agreeable, and we get to the end, and the city is not agreeable, we are still at zero because we cannot, it won't matter. We're not collecting any money.
Correct. At that point, the, the city would choose, if, if the city chose then to say, "We're not agreeable, therefore, we're going to withdraw from the inter-local agreement, and we're no longer going to have a collection," then the collection has to be imposed countywide.
Okay.
So yes, the answer to your question is yes, but the mechanism to get there is not quite exactly right.
Understood. And I think most of us, I know I have heard you say it as well as myself, I would be very frustrated if the city wanted to leave our inter-local agreement to, to not collect the fee. So, and I don't think that the city doesn't want to collect the fee. I think they just want it to be legally right and correct in their own mind. So, and from their perspective seat. So I think that the solution is that the inter-local working group get back together, and everyone sit down and have a conversation about what they need to see present. And that is the opportunity for everyone to air what they need to see. And it seems like the county is, is good, and everything is there, but it seems like there's a holdup with the city. So what I'm, I guess my suggestion is, why doesn't we, why, unless we already have what we need from the city and we can confirm that that's it, but I know that this board member wants to see someone from operations present how much it would cost and the time it would take to meet the city's request, what Binesh, how, what Binesh says that would be. That's what I would like from this board member's seat to know from, from our consultant, how long it would take and how much it would cost.
And the technical working group under our inter-local agreement is, is supposed to meet twice a year and discuss broad funding issues, though they're not necessarily the group that should be discussing all of the technical details of methodology of the study and stuff like that. The, it would be, this is a stat, I mean, this is something that could be resolved by staff interactions. In other words, the staff who are the, who are developing the methodology, the technical folks, so to speak, if they, the, the courts would expect we do what we can within the best available data. It's not necessarily a no-go based on the different data by county and city, as long as the technical folks can make some sense of them somehow methodologically. They'd have to be comfortable and persuasive on that point. So we wouldn't really know until the technical people look at it. Now, I would say that if I were asked to participate in such a group, I would do so in such a way that I would distance myself and allow the people with the technical expertise to determine the methodologies and what works as to manipulating the data. I would also say the same thing with elected officials and anybody else in the room. If it's not somebody who's, who's able to give the methodological data for how we make those groups work, then they're kind of extraneous units at that point.
Okay. So that is my ask from this board member's seat. I want to know how much it's going to cost and how long it would take to meet the request that the city has provided to us, because I don't think this board has been formally given that information, and I think that that's information I would like to know, to be, make an informed decision. The other one and another question I asked was, if a lawsuit comes forward, I'm of the understanding that we would have to pause adoption until that lawsuit is settled, and I asked if that was accurate.
Possibly. That would be whether a lawsuit was brought in the form of an injunction, and then whether we prevailed on such injunction. So if someone just came forward and alleged that it's incorrect, there would be a temporary injunction that, if they applied for it, which would temporarily halt collection if they applied for it and showed that there was an imminent risk of harm. Then, at that point, there would be a hearing, usually it happened quite rapidly, and there would be most likely, again, I'm anticipating litigation, sort of what we would do. At that point, then, it would be a matter of determining whether, whether the, whether it would survive a motion for summary judgment. So for example, in the Santa Rosa case, it didn't survive a motion for summary judgment because one side clearly just had facts and argument that were overwhelming the other. Now, if it survives summary judgment, then the injunction doesn't necessarily remain in place. That's up to the judge. However, I will state that Mr. Minter, Mr. Sexton and I have also discussed means by which, if there were a challenge for any reason, or prior to there being a challenge, if there's anything, any fine point that we can't shore up perfectly amongst ourselves, there are other options as attorneys that we can do to bring this as a declaratory judgment before a judge in order to have them make some determinations for us. But-
But potentially, theoretically, we could have to halt collection, even if the city said yes, and then we were sued because we are being made aware that there may be a pitfall, and we receive a lawsuit, we could potentially have to cease collection until there was a solution.
Yes, that is one potential outcome.
Okay. So then, again, we're not collecting a fee. So to my point, I just think it would, it makes sense to, and I think I, I can totally own, I've been the one that is haste and wants to get this taken care of. And I can also acknowledge when I see a, when I see a shortcoming, and when I see a hole, and I see this as a shortcoming and a hole, and I want to do it right the first time and not have to do it again. So that's my position on it, and I'm going to bring up impact fees in every board comments until, until we get this done, because I think we have to continue to have a conversation as a collective group about it. And so that's my position. So that concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you for your expertise.
If I may also add, because your comments-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
That was also my concern in pulling out additional categories, is that when you pull out additional categories, each time you step further away, you increase the possibility of a lawsuit, which will do exactly what you're talking about, by an opposing party that says, "You treated this group in this manner, but what about people in single-family residences or mobile homes or anything else like that?" And so whether it is doing something assistive that we believe is in the best interest of the city and everyone, whether it's to get it passed or whether it's a challenge to get it passed, that, that's, either way, there is always the potential for litigation, and that potential does increase the more we stray from a central theme. That's why I asked for the input of my, of my colleagues there to give me some input as to whether they have any further discussion on the matter. So I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. James. I'm going to go to Genesis, and then we might come back to that. Genesis, do you have something for us this evening? Thank you.
First off, I just wanted to say thank you guys for allowing us this opportunity. I know this is my last time meeting with you guys, and I know Caitlin is very, very appreciative of that as well, but I also wanted to say, I saw my principal here, Ms. Guest, and I just wanted to give her props because she's a really great principal. She's very engaging with the students, and it's, she's very personable. I don't like feel afraid to talk to her or anything like that, which I don't think anyone should, but what I wanted to say is like, she's very helpful to any of my questions because I do bother her a lot, and I like asking her a lot of questions. So, and then also, I wanted to talk about school lunch week because I know Dr. Gullett mentioned that. Lunch ladies are so, they're, they're not appreciated enough, and every time I go to see them or grabbing a donut from breakfast, they're very, they're always really nice, and they always look like they're having a good time, and they want to be there, and I just wanted to give them props for that because they're doing an amazing job. So thank you.
Thank you, Genesis. I think board will just go to our individual comments, and perhaps we can make our thoughts individually as to the conversation that Dr. James started just a moment ago. So I'll go to you again, Ms. Conrad.
I just wanted to give a shout out today as we went through our agenda. North Marion High had a perfect audit, and so did Spar. North Marion had, oh, they have eight more accounts. And so looking at that report and what they have to do and what has to be right, it's just a lot. And so kudos to them, as they both came through with a perfect audit. So I just wanted to celebrate that. Really, one of the best beginnings that we've had for me, for this board meeting. I was just very, it was very heartwarming to have so many of our administrators here this evening, and I feel very fortunate for the work that they do every day, not just five days a week, but seven days a week, the care that they take for their students, their staff members, the needs of the district for even families that, that don't show up. They're constantly reaching out to help the students and the families at their schools. And so I just want to say thank you again to our principals for showing up this evening and helping us celebrate. I really do appreciate you, and I know it's a difficult job. And so thank you every day for what you do. Also wanted to give a shout out for transportation as we continue to work on making progress and getting our students to school on time. I'm excited that we're able to take action so quickly, and look forward to seeing what November 6th brings, watching those percentages increase, as I anticipate, our students getting to school on time, because I know that's a focus for everyone within the district. So thank you for everyone helping with transportation. My last concern is that in our agenda today, we had over 10 pages of teachers that were out of field. And as I was on a meeting yesterday, listening to the struggles across the state for getting teachers certified, and I just wanted to find out where we are in that process, since we have so many teachers that are out of field, and what- And what do we, as a district, Marion County, help our, our staff do to become certified in the area that they're teaching? Because as you look through the list, there's a lot of key roles that I know as a parent, I would want to make sure my child had a certified teacher in that area. So, it was a lot of ESE, a lot of math, all of those things. And so, I was just interested, um, as a board member, what do we do to help our teachers reach this certification point and what opportunities, um, do they have, uh, so we can help them move forward, uh, in the role that they assume right now? And that is all I have for this evening. You want me to chime in on impact fees? We're going to do that after.
Um, if you have something to add, go ahead and give your thoughts on-
Um, I don't, I don't really have anything to add. I do, um, I want to be preventative. I don't want this process to stall out as we get to the end of it. So, I would also like to know what we're looking at as far as the cost, um, to meet these added, um, requests, so that we can move forward with a better, more educated decision.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Uh, we'll go to Reverend Cummings next.
Uh, good evening, everyone, once again. Um, it was good, the, the, tonight's meeting started out very well as far as celebrating our principals, uh, to see so many from around the district. We have a, a tremendous group of principal, school leaders, uh, in this county, and, uh, they do a excellent job day in and day out. Superintendent alluded to it, that, um, many times people don't understand exactly how hard the principals' jobs are, because it goes beyond the, the bells ringing. Their jobs go way beyond that. And they represent their schools well. And, uh, I just want to thank them, not only the principals, but the assistant principals as well, and all of those leadership teams. Those are the ones that are in the trenches every day. They're, they're the ones that's dealing with the, the, the stuff that, um, people don't realize they deal with. So, and they're, they're the ones dealing with the parents that are calling and, and the community at large. So, um, I appreciate everything that they do. This is a great month to celebrate them and to see that much knowledge under one roof at one time altogether. So that's, that's tremendous. This is also, uh, as we celebrate Principals Appreciation Month, this is also, um, National Bullying Prevention Month as well. Um, oftentimes, we get calls and correspondence about kids being, um, taunted or bullied or whatever. Um, I just want to state for the record that our district has, pretty much has a no, a zero tolerance when it comes to bullying and that we don't appreciate it, we don't, um, we, we're going to investigate it and we're looking into it. Um, so parents, I, I ask that you have those conversations with your kids. Um, if they think they're being bullied, they feel they're being bullied, they need to have those conversations, they need to tell someone, um, because it's, it's a, it's a trend nationally that needs to be stopped. Also, um, this is also, yesterday started the beginning of open enrollment. Uh, I want to remind our staff that don't miss the window to, uh, assess your, change your benefits or things with, in regards to open enrollment. Oftentimes, um, I, I think every year you should go back and, and, and look at what you have, what you don't have, reassess your needs. Um, as your families change, you may get more people, you may add more family members or, you know, things may change, different situations change. And we have to make sure that we encourage them to look at open enrollment and do what's best for your family. I'm one of those people, it's better to have it and not need it than the, than the need and not have it. So, I, I want to encourage our folk to, to look at it. Sometimes, you know, we, they, they look, I hear people saying, "Well, I, I should have got this, I should have got that." And they're, they're looking at the dollar amount, but some, some, some coverages are, are beneficial to you in case something happens. So I want to encourage our staff to please look at all the things that are offered through open enrollment. Um, this board did some things, so there's a little bit of changes as far as insurances, um, coming up in this upcoming year. So please, look at your open enrollment and, um, don't miss the window. Thursday, we had some, the board in the work session had a very spirited discussion in regards to transportation. I, I listened intently and I listened at some recommendations that came forth. Um, one of those, one of those things that came forth was the bell time that we voted on tonight, uh, for MTI and trying to alleviate some of the problems that we're having in, uh, getting the kids to school on time. We also heard, um, some recommendations of adding some positions to transportation. Um, I want to caution us that we don't just go, uh, adding crazy as we're starting to add positions. We still have a responsibility to be fiscally responsible. We still have a responsibility to make sure that we stay within our spending limits. Yes, we may need some more positions, but when, sometimes when you seen that we need, we're saying, "Add these many positions," and those positions aren't, the current positions aren't being filled, it ca- it causes me to pause and say, "How can we add if we haven't filled those?" Because we're still not going to be able to fill them. Um, and then, um, I saw a price tag that was really astronomical. So I, I just encourage us that as we move forward, I know, I know, we have the one that, we have probably the, one of the best, uh, I won't say one of them, I'm going to say the best CFO in the country. However, she's not bewitched. She, she can't twinkle her nose and make some money appear. She's not magic. She can only spend, we can only spend what we have. And we have to be smart in trying to, I heard someone say, I don't know who said it, but it was like, "We're going to look to, for Teresa to find another pot of money." Well, if you're moving it from somewhere, if you, if you find a pot of money from somewhere to pay for this over there, somewhere it's going to go lacking eventually. So I advise us to make sure that as we move forward with addressing these positions and increasing staff, um, that we look at it from a very conservative manner and making sure that we are not hurting one area to cover another area. Because I feel like that's where we're heading if we start adding a whole bunch of positions. Um, so, those are my comments. I, I pray the board is, is, is looking at all these things and we don't just go, go, uh, add, add, add crazy to solve this solution, to solve this issue without looking at the totality of what's going to happen district-wide. So, those concludes my comments.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Vice Chair Thrower.
Thank you. And, um, Board Member Cummings, um, I share your thoughts as far as transportation is concerned. Um, just as recently as this afternoon, I was having some conversation over there and, you know, if, I'm not going to say if, I'm going to say when, transportation gets to full employment, uh, what's already approved on the staffing plan, that's going to take care of a lot of our problems because the kids will have predictable bus drivers, the routes will be running predictably, there'll be stability. Um, and I also remain committed to implementing the code of student conduct when it comes to the buses. And we've spoken about this on and on and on, about what a circle it becomes, you know? And from the school's perspective, they don't want to spend all their suspension days on bus suspensions because then if the kid acts up at school, then, you know, there's that to consider. Uh, but until we break this circle and take the short-term pain, it's just going to continue. And I don't know if any of you have, uh, I would recommend that you watch some of those bus videos. If it was your child, I would like to think I'd know what you'd do. So, when you have it on tape- So before we go adding almost a million dollars, I feel like we have tools that we need to give the opportunity to work. Now, that being said, there are routes that definitely need a second person on the bus and have for a long time. But I believe those need to be targeted and sparingly, and we need to set the standard, enforce the standard, and be very, very partnered with our schools on this. We have drivers that are picking up so many different routes, they don't even know what the principal's name or the dean's name of the school that they're picking routes up from. So, you know, getting on the same page as, as the adults and, and tightening all this up and in the meantime, continuing to recognize the urgency. Um, I love seeing the percentages, especially of on-time pickup in the morning and on-time delivery in the morning, um, continuing to edge up, um, into the high eighties. Um, the afternoons are still a problem. Um, absenteeism is still a problem. Um, taking a mental health day is a lot more appealing if you've had to put up with some of the craziness that I see on these videos. And I bet if those kids were riding calm and relaxed and, it'd be a lot less mental health days being taken too. So, just some things to think about. Um, whatever the, the asks are, I, I want to honor, but I also want to keep the focus on the foundation. You know, regardless of what's happening in the community, regardless of what's happening in the streets, that is there. School is school, home is home, the community is a community. Maybe it's a tremendous sense of relief, I hope, that the school stands for what we're trying to stand for, instead of just trying to spend our way out of it. So those are my thoughts on, on that. Um, always appreciate the principals so much, and what better spokeswoman than Principal Ginger Cruz, the, the mayor of the Village of Westport High School? Um, you know, it's, it really is something, what they do every day and, and their commitment to kids. And it's just really is special to, to have them all come and at the end of a long day. And it's, it's really, really appreciated. Um, some fun things. Well, first, not so fun, kind of sadness, um, Genesis, you're going to be so missed. And I'm sure the rest of you got the sweet email from Caitlin who couldn't be here tonight and just really shared how important and meaningful it, it's, it's been for her. Um, you've shared that as well, Genesis, and it's truly been a pleasure. Yes, you set the bar high. Um, so we will miss you. And, um, some fun things we have coming up. Um, I wanted to share that, uh, Hillcrest School was just featured on Horse Capital TV. I think that also aired on TV 20 recently. Um, almost everyone knows that there's therapeutic horseback riding at Hillcrest School, and it's been there for over 30 years. One of the consistent ties has been Betty Gray. She was the director of the program there when it was through Marion Therapeutic Riding Association, MTRA, which is going strong still in the community and doing fantastic programs for veterans and PTSD and just all kinds of, of different folks in the community. And then, um, Betty started stirrups and strides up at her farm in Citra and, uh, was able to provide a satellite facility at Hillcrest when MTRA was, uh, no longer able to, you know, do, it was basically triple duty with everything they had going on at, at their farm and then, um, trying to do Hillcrest as well. So I'd just really like to take a second to thank Betty for, um, everything that she does and also the program director, Diane Matheson. Um, incredible horsewoman. Uh, was out there a couple of weeks ago and just the, the skill level of the students has increased so much, um, over the past couple of years. And, and when you think about all of the skills that it takes to actually sit on a horse and have a horse respond and, and the reflexes and, and, uh, just the multitude of, of skills that are embedded in that, uh, it is something to really be proud of. And we have a lot of things to be proud of. We focus on the things that are problematic because we want to fix them. Um, but we're in a school system where for the third time, I mean, North Marion High is hitting it out of the park, um, lately, for the third time, they have an experiment going up to the International Space Lab. Their ECO, their E. coli is heading up here to get some experiments done on it in, in zero gravity and anti-gravity. So, you know, Lisa Fontaine Dorsey and Carla Reedy and, you know, all of their students. That's really, really amazing and worthy of conversation and celebration and, and focus. Um, also, uh, it's my understanding that not only, uh, can you get your associate's degree as you graduate from high school, but very soon you'll be able to also get your associate's in science, uh, degree. Yes, Dr. Gullett's not, very soon. Um, our vocational industry certifications, our dual enrollment opportunities, military, the very advanced coursework, um, that we offer, um, Cambridge, you know, IB, ACE, AP, all of those pathways, which as a horse girl, I think of those as just trails to success. You know, and there's probably, I don't know, I'd love to get the number, 80 to 90% of kids that are really doing the, the right things. And it's important to, to celebrate them. And so, as we move into the, into the holiday season, I start thinking about Christmas parades and I do have some updates. Um, first of all, the first parade kickoff, according to my understanding, is the Bellevue Christmas Parade, December 3rd. And, um, Sue Mosley and her friends of the Christmas Parade will be organizing that again this year. It was a lot of fun last year and, um, so glad that's happening. The Okala Christmas Parade is December 9th. Um, we've got the commitment again this year from the Paglia's to do the float for us, so, so that's a go. Um, very soon we'll know the date of the Donellen Christmas Parade. So as soon as, you know, I, I know that, we'll get that out to you. Um, so really, you know, great and fun things happening within all of the challenges that an organization of this size and, and what our mission is, um, are, are doing. And it's, uh, it's just really important to celebrate that. And that's why it's so important to get this impact fee thing right. Um, we, we know we need the money. Um, I think we were all thinking that we would update the ordinance and, you know, restart it and that it wouldn't be as complicated as it seems to have ended up being. Um, right out of the gate, um, there were suggestions being made, you know, right here at the dais. Um, you know, people were talking to people and, um, the same people that would be plus more at any technical working group. You know, there's been all kinds of conversations, all kinds of stakeholder meetings, all kinds of focus groups and task forces meeting that were meeting before that, and now they've turned to this topic. So, where I am with this, and I'm certainly no data scientist, I am not an impact fee expert, um, I'm trying hard to rely on, on staff and our school board attorney to bring us forward recommendations of how to get through this in a way that expedites and protects. You know, I believe that the goal is to land on an impact fee ordinance. There's always going to be a group that is against impact fees and they're going to work very hard to delay it as long as possible. And we're not going to convince them. So, that sort of is what it is. But, but the other groups that we've all had conversations with seem to understand, you know, and, and really support, um, for the most part, that this is something that needs to happen because it makes our community stronger and better. So I continue to be, um, very encouraged. I am glad, um, Attorney Powers, that, that you've engaged the co-counsel. Um, and I'm looking forward to hearing about these education benefit districts, um, what those are going to look like. I'm also looking forward to hearing back, uh, what you share from, uh, your outreach to the city. Um, I'm also wanting clarification on, on the hold harmless agreement. You know, that's something that the county, um, there was firmness there. And I don't know, because I'm not an attorney, if, if there's a legal pathway to holding any government entity harmless. I, I need clarification on that, not tonight, but I am just as interested as anybody in bringing this all together and, and wrapping this up. Um, the fact of the matter is, is that the city has changed a lot since we started, since the, the impact fee that we're trying to update was approved, let alone in the last 11 years. So there are new things going on that weren't going on before. Um, and the last thing that I'll say, I 100% agree with Dr. James on this one, the last thing I would want to do as a board member is put in all this hard work and leave a stone unturned that could have been, um, in very good faith and expeditiously, you know, um, taken care of. We need to be reflective of, of today's times. We need to be reflective of today's times, you know, where our county is, where our city is, where our municipalities are. And it would seem to make sense to me as a layman that our updated impact fee needs to reflect that. I'm also a little bit reminded of when we were trying, I think in very good faith, to try to make something happen up there in Reddick for the park, you know? And you extend a hand and you ask and you try to support. And there does come a time where, but I don't think we're there quite yet. There does come a time when you have to say, you know what? We've listened, we've met, we've talked, we've tried to honor everybody's desires, we've tried to mitigate any potential negative negativity that could come back on us. And then here's what it is. So, I remain confident that we can get there. I, too, like Board Member Conrad, want to know, you know, how much it would cost and how long will it take to incorporate into our impact fee ordinance request what is reflected of today's times in the city that they can feel comfortable with. So, I am going to look to staff for recommendations on how to make that happen. Because again, I am not a data scientist, I am not an impact fee expert, but I am a communicator. And I'm very interested in landing on a final product where even the folks that aren't that thrilled about, I mean, nobody's really thrilled about having to pay extra money, but can at least grudgingly accept as a good document. So, that's where I am with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll come back around to the impact fee conversation, but I want to first say, Ms. Conrad, you stole my thunder because I always do shout-outs for perfect audits. And North Marion High and Spire Elementary did have perfect audits that we approved today. That's fine. But I always love to appreciate those amazing bookkeepers, secretaries, principals, to ensure that they have perfect audits and very, very job well done. Also want to say tomorrow is the last day of these nine weeks. So, students, there's probably not a single student listening to this, but if you have tests or makeup--
There's one.
There's one. There's one. Thank you, Genesis. If you have tests or makeup work, you have less than 24 hours to get that done. So, I know my own children have some tests tomorrow and things that they'll be doing, not makeup tests, but actual tests at the last day of the nine weeks. So, I hope everyone finishes this first quarter strong. Also wanted to mention that the legislative platform development with FSBA was last Friday, so I wanted to kind of give you an update. So, our first item, it was the electronic transaction piece. And I think that one is going to happen, no ifs, ands, or buts, because most everybody that's been talking about that's like, what? What's the problem? Really? What? And so, I believe that that one is going to be an easy fix and hopefully we'll move through this legislative cycle for us on our behalf. The other items that we mentioned, I just kind of wanted to give you an update of where we landed. So, one of them was the age, the kindergarten age change. The conversation around that table was about how the legislation could be written, that the decision would be driven by parents. And so, I'm going to be working with another board member out of Orange County who has a lot of relationship with the PTA. Actually, Angie Gallo out of Orange County was responsible for the recess bill when that came about. And so, she and I are going to be working to see if there's something, some language that can be started and see if the PTA would be interested in picking up that with us. So, we'll be figuring out what that looks like. It may not be something this cycle, but we'll be continuing that conversation from a legislative platform idea. The conversation about attendance, I told you that we had a representative that is ready to hopefully do legislation for us, and FSBA wants to watch that. And rather than make it a part of their platform this year, they want to see if it gains traction, if in fact we're able to. So, it does feel like a Marion County issue that we're going to put forth and see how it goes. Dr. Gullett and I have a meeting with another representative tomorrow, so we will be talking about that again and see where that goes. The conversation about the millage rate changing was dead in the water, dead on arrival. That one did not go anywhere, and FSBA is not going to pick that up. However, I did make a valiant plea to say this is something that we are seeing as an issue in our community. This is a community situation that we're having, and we want to ensure that we're asking for capital resources everywhere we possibly can. And so, that was why we made it a part of our platform. But as far as FSBA picking it up, that was not one that they did. Some of the other items that Dr. Gullett had submitted for us, including some things with career technical education and certifications and offered in certain classes, as well as some graduation requirements, some of those things, I think, will end up hitting the FSBA platform. I've gotten some information back from Dr. Gullett and the team. And so, Dr. Danielle Thomas and Dr. Kim McDougall, they're working on some of that platform language right now. So, there are some things that Marion County put forth, they just weren't on our little handout. So, I do think that there'll be some things that hit the platform that Marion County put forth. And I definitely petitioned really hard for us to get some of the other items, but that's kind of where we landed. So, I did want to give you an update after some spirited conversation on Friday. Also wanted to give an update because I think this is pertinent to our impact fee conversation. So, today I participated in the Governor's West meeting virtually. And during that meeting, a lot of conversation was held about affordable housing. And city staff actually is going to be recommending some language changes to the affordable housing qualification requirements. And so, they hope to have something coming to Planning and Zoning Commission in November, with that going to City Council, hopefully either late November or early December, if it passes through. But they are recommending some language changes. I know one of the conversations that Vice Chair Thrower's brought up in the past is affordable housing is something that is available, like the supplements and those kinds of things are available. But the language currently in the ordinance with the city says that I think it has to be at 80% of the poverty rate or something like that. And I think it would be like a house, Ms. Debick was in on the call today, I should have taken really feverish notes. Roughly a household of four household needs to have a total income of about $52,000 or so to qualify for that affordable housing, the way the language currently is written. And they're wanting to change that so that it would actually be, you could qualify for some affordable housing, I'm going to call them stipends, that's not the right word, but that you could qualify at 100 or even 125% of that number instead of the 80%. So, it'd be more like the 75 to even closer to $90,000 in a household of four, understanding that wages have changed in our community, thanks to all of the efforts that have been occurring, as well as cost of inflation has gone up. And those two things haven't necessarily, those two things aren't exactly the same. But with city staff also working to make recommendations to their own opportunities with affordable housing qualifications, then I think that just further speaks to all the work that's being done to try to ensure that those builders and developers who are working in that space will have the ability to have those credits, I guess is a word for that. So, just wanted to bring that up. That was in today's Governor's West meeting, so that I was taking notes mentally, but not enough to give you a clear picture. But as that comes forth to Planning and Zoning Commission, I will certainly let you know how that fares. So, on the impact fee conversation, while we've had some time here and I've been hearing from others, I have some concerns. And so, I understand that we have board member interest in hearing the cost that it would take, the time and the cost to undertake analysis on the multifamily categories. So, I've taken some time here and just looked at the existing studies that Benish did for us. So, I'm not certain that, first of all, we know, based on property appraiser data, that it is not available the way it's being asked for. So, we already know that. Based on the numbers from Benish, we have more than 19,000 condos or apartments. We can break out the condo because we know we've already taken care of those. So, more than 17,000 apartments that would have to be analyzed to determine the number of bedrooms in each of those apartments, based on what I'm seeing here in the current data. Looking at just the new homes from 2017 on, there's only 670 apartments that have come online. But total in the apartment, total analysis, we're talking more than 17,000. If they need to do that analysis on, because what's being asked for is breaking out the apartment category in number of bedrooms. And I know I've already said this last week, but I'll say it again, the property appraiser does not have that as a specific category. So, each individual apartment building would have to be analyzed individually, looking again at 17,000 apartments and looking at the bedrooms, to be able to break that out. Because the property appraiser, in their notes in each building, then would potentially say how many bedrooms there are. What has been occurring lately, if you look at the headlines, and I was pulling some of those as well, there's been a lot of apartments that have been approved, but they haven't actually come on the property appraisers' tax rolls yet. So, since 2017, only 670 have come online. So, I understand the concern of the city because there have been a lot that have been approved, but actually the ones that Benish would be able to analyze are not the ones that are currently on the tax rolls. Because 2021, I pulled some, you know, 750 units here and 95 units there, and all of these being approved, but they weren't actually online on the property rolls in 2022 when our study data is equivalent. So, I just wanted to bring that up as a point of note to say, I understand the question, I understand what is being requested of Benish to do. I am concerned, without having them tell us directly, but I am concerned the data is not available the way it's being asked for. Can they go apartment building by apartment building and look at the notes from the property appraiser? Certainly, they can. What the timeline on that will be, I have some concerns about. What the cost of that will be, I have concerns about as well. I know that there have been at least two or three board members asking for that, asking for the timeline and asking for the cost. And perhaps Benish can give us that information to say, based on what's being asked and to look at 17,000 apartments and see how many bedrooms each is, this is what it's going to take and this is what it's going to cost. Perhaps that is what this board would be interested in having at our disposal to make an educated decision. Personally, from this seat, I am comfortable with the data that we have set forth. I'm comfortable with where we have landed. I'm comfortable with the joint meeting that we had with the county commission, who will be the ones that put this out for vote. I'm comfortable with pulling out townhomes and condos and mobile homes versus mobile home parks, as was requested in that joint meeting. I just continue to have concerns as to where we're going to land. Because in that, also want to state, in the 19,000 apartments that we have in Marion County, more than 5,000 students live in them. So, that is the justification for, or the rationale, I should say, as a part of how that student generation number was calculated for multifamily. Even if, even if this calculation is done, it's possible, again, this is all just speculative from my seat, but it is possible that we do have students in one-bedroom apartments. They may just not be the new one-bedroom apartments that are coming online. And that, I think, is what the concern of the city is, that they would be of the belief that studio and one-bedroom apartments perhaps don't have children in them. And I think that's why we might be considering breaking that out. Perhaps, again, as I say, the new ones coming online may not, but those, we have 5,000 students living in 19,000 apartments. So, those are my thoughts, and I'm certain that you want to offer some feedback on what I've said. So, any additional thoughts?
If I can.
Dr. James?
When I introduced the tiered system back what seems like 900 years ago, I received data from the county's building department. So, the data exists, but from building departments, not from the property appraiser. But the county and the city's building departments absolutely have the data, very easily and readily available. It is there. It is not in the property appraiser, that is accurate. But the building departments have it and could easily share it. The data, the data does exist. So, it is about looking at a different data set to collect the information. I would disagree that I don't, I really, there was a period of time in this very, what seems like a long journey, that I did wonder if it was about the amount of money. At this point, I do not think it's about the amount of money. I do wholeheartedly believe it is about making sure that it is reflective of the type of permits that are pulled and the different building types that exist within each municipality. And if the SGR winds up being the same and the fee is the same, but the data that is there is reflective of what the building departments have, then it's a non-issue. Then the number stays the same. But it's about it being reflective of what they have. And so, the amount doesn't change or doesn't impact their decision. It's about the data being correct. And the data does exist in the building departments.
And I appreciate that, Dr. James. The challenge with that information, though, is our entire study would have to be redone. Because if you look at every single data set and every single data table in the Benish study, they are all referenced to the Marion County Property Appraiser database. So, if we say we would like for the study to be based on the permitting in the county and the city, the entire study would have to be redone.
And I wasn't on the board when the study started, but I would offer that, and I wasn't a part of any of the conversations. But I would think that at some point collectively, everyone was asked, hey, what do you need to see in this for it to make sense? Because I think the, where it all fell apart, or the precipice of the falling apart, occurred when we were getting data, and Attorney Powers and I have talked about this, we were getting data based on picking back up the same ordinance we already had. And we have now potentially entered a period of pivot and realization that that may not work. And so, yes, the study and the data that we collected is not reflective, potentially, of where we need to land. And Monday morning quarterback all day, it doesn't matter, we're here now. And so, if we get there and the city steps back and is unwilling to participate, we still have no impact fee. And then we will still have to go back and get another study and spend more money to do it then. And then would be 90, 120 days from now. So, if we're going to wind up potentially being there no matter what, then yes, I acknowledge we may have to get a whole new data set done. I acknowledge that.
Attorney Powers, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, and I know this is ahead of our conversation we'll be having about educational benefit districts. But if perhaps we created educational benefit districts, and one of those districts is the city of Ocala, city limits, and we created that as its own educational benefit district, could then impact fees be collected in the county if we had the county separated however we choose, but one of the benefit districts is the city of Ocala?
My answer before-- My answer before doing a little further research would have been yes. However, there is a case involving St. John's County that indicates that, there was an appeal based on a Supreme Court, a case that went to the Supreme Court, that indicates that because we would not be, let me clarify the question. The question seems to be if, for example, we drew one of our educational benefit districts as solely the city boundaries, then could we collect, could that, if the city does not wish to go forward with collection, then essentially we could not spend anything within those particular districts. The St. John's County case, and that's St. John's County versus Northeast Florida Builders Association, seems to indicate otherwise, particularly because it indicates that collection must be county-wide until a majority of the population is encompassed. And I'm going to assume that the city of Ocala would be necessary to meet a majority of the population. Now, I don't necessarily agree with the idea that that's based on a title, I'm sorry, on a Florida constitutional article, as was suggested in a memorandum by Mr. Mentor, though I'll give him credit that that was, it's good research. But I think the result-- But I think the result may essentially end up being the same. Regardless, I think that in doing so, that creates a situation that nobody wants to be in, which is if we did, even if it were legal, we would now say, okay, we'll collect everywhere else and spend everywhere else, but until the city decides it wants to be on board, we can't collect and we can't spend on anything within the city. So there's at least some good evidence to suggest that that would not be permissible for us to do it that way. And I, and I believe that although the case law, maybe it'll be argued either way, I believe I'd fall on the side of it having to be, that we do need everybody on board in order to make that work.
Thank you for that clarification. So board, what say you? Because if, if we were to, I'm going to use the term backup and punt, because honestly, if, if we know that the data is available, but it is not the data set that our entire study is built upon.
Vice Chair. Thank you, yes. And, but when blind spots are identified and we would be, it would not be in anyone's best interest not to address those blind spots. And here's another case in point, why it's a very good idea to continue to work together, you know, collaborate together. Yes, the inter-local agreement took a year to hammer out, but there was a lot of definitions that needed to be looked at with a fine-tooth comb. And when you have that many people needing to have input, and you're trying to accommodate everybody's schedules and comb through a document that has not been looked at, really, you know, in such a long time. But that's kind of, I feel like where we've gotten with this impact fee thing, too, it's, nothing is that simple anymore, is it? Where we just, you know, hit the start button again and let's go. And there's important blind spots that have been identified because times have changed. So if we're going to do this, the end product is what it's all about. I'm certainly not interested in any artificial obstacles or barriers, you know, I think that, that we have the right people in place to keep the, keep moving forward. But I just think that, you know, there's been some things identified here that need to be addressed. And so again, I guess I'll focus on my 1-2-3s, which are, you know, the educational benefit districts, how those will look, making sure that the city's situation is reflective of today's times, that we're looking at having already reduced our ask very significantly. So what this school board member desires is, however the, the money comes out, it is money that is coming our way that, that is, it's, it's money coming our way that, that we have done our best to protect and make sure comes our way, I guess is the best way I can say it at this, even though it's only 7:43, it feels like it's 3:00 in the morning. So, and, and the hold harmless part of this, that I think we need some real closure on that. Because that came through loud and clear to me. So, so those are, those are my big three. And if it ends up delaying it, well, we have other things that we're working on. Maybe in the end, this will be a silver lining and interest rates will go down between then and now. I don't know, we can hope and pray. But I'd rather, I'd rather do it right than have to redo it. And I'd rather it be comprehensible and reflective of, of what our town looks like now and capturing that. So that's where I am.
May I, Madam Chair? Yes, Attorney Powers.
I do want to add, just since this discussion's happening now, two things that I hope don't take, don't create a negative gloom over anything here, but I need to, I need to point out two additional factors. And one is, as to the same St. John's County case that I was talking about earlier, it does indicate that the county determines the amount of fees and collects them, not the city. The county determines that, not the municipalities. And the county does that at the request of what we believe those collections should be, based on what the needs are and based on what the study shows. That also means that our initial, when we went forward, we went forward with an ask at 40%. That was our opening offer, of 40% of what we were told was needed based on student generation to address the impact of growth. And that is not necessarily a request that is static. I mean, certainly every time we go back, that is something the board has to make a decision on, whether it wishes to continue at that rate, whether it wishes to increase that and ask for the county to increase that rate, or, you know, do we start at 100, do we go to 60, do we, what is it? That, that's, that's, again, the discretion of the board to decide what to present to the county, and solely the discretion of the county to decide if it wishes to, to, to produce at that level. So if it's not about the money, that's great. That's, that's one factor to consider, because that's not just the only thing in this process that is a completely static number. The other is, as to the hold harmless, I think this board has, has gotten my input that I do not believe that that's appropriate. However, I'm working on that with my counterparts to find discussions as to what language may satisfy everyone. Now, we'll get there, but when we are being asked to manipulate what our ask is in order to accommodate things that could potentially open up additional grounds for, for challenge, one might question the potential of why is it that we're being, why is it that we would hold harmless, something that we didn't, that we're not solely responsible for generating? We're generating this with the input of two other parties. The two other parties have said, we want to do it this way. It's not just your way that was being brought to the table. We're doing it in a way that takes into account opinions of builders and developers, residents, the county, and city. And that's why it's not looking exactly the same as where we started. And I frankly believe it may be an unreasonable ask, and that's going to be up to the board to decide, whether there should be still some sort of attempt to make the school board completely liable for the adoption of such impact fee, if it were to be challenged, that, that we would pay the entire cost of defense of that. So I'll deal with the technicalities of that with my counterparts, but I just want to bring that to your attention as well.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. I am feverishly trying to look at Florida statute and, and looking at other school districts in the state of Florida. I haven't been able to find anything that says people don't use property appraiser data. So I, I'm trying to see, I'm reading the statute right now, because I know that you can't collect a fee or put a fee on anything that's just a permit. So I, I'm actually questioning the legality of using permit data versus property appraiser data, but I don't have that legal definition just yet. But if I pulled St. John's County and Broward County, their impact fee studies and student generation rates were based on property appraiser data as well, so that was as, as far as I've gotten while this conversation has continued. But I, I do honestly question the legality of using something that is not property appraiser data. I mean, you can pull a permit and never actually build. You can pull a permit and, and take a really long time to build. And so I, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about starting over. I'm just going to say that, and I'm going to say it very honestly, because if we start over, then do we still use 2022 data? Or do we say, no, we'll build, you know, we'll build the whole study based on everything from June 2023? I mean, there, there's a lot of, of parameters that we, if we're doing an open book right now and we're changing it all, then, and that's what this board wants to do, this board member is not in favor of starting over. And essentially, if all we're going to do is to start using a different data set to justify our student generation rate, then we have to start over. And I am not in favor of that. I'm just not.
I think that would honestly end up being a question for the data scientists and the planners from both the city, the county, and, and the, and the school board to work out. I mean, as to, as to what, what data can be used and how it is to be used and how it's to be interpreted, and the methodology used for it. So that is probably, that, that's, that's the direction that likely we would need that deep expertise.
Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair.
So we have questions that, that are specific that we need to get answered.
And the main question is, to start with, can we use building permit data to build a student generation rate? And if the answer to that is no, then we, that conversation has to stop, because there's nothing else to build it upon. That conversation right there has to stop. If we need to then also ask Benish to tell us the time and the cost to analyze the 19,000 apartments in Marion County, that's the second question, if this board is interested in that information.
Just as a point of clarification, it's not building permit data, it's the building department data, because the building department has data based on homes and apartments that have certificates of occupancies or COs. So a permit is different than a CO. And so, yes, there are absolutely people who per, built, pull permits and never build anything, or never finish building, or you pull the permit as A and it winds up being LMNOP, completely different from what you started out with. But the building department also has data on things that have COs. And that is the information that you would be looking for, is the certificate of occupancies, what did it finalize being, not the permits.
Thank you for that clarification. Hopefully, the city and the county look at certificate occupancy the same, if that's the direction we're trying to go. And that the property appraiser, when they collect the certificate of occupancy information, I guess they just exclude the information on the number of bedrooms and apartments. I, I don't, I don't know what, if the data is collected, why it's not a part of the property appraiser data. So. Seems as if we have two questions that we'll need answers.
Right, and I, I would say, I've reached out to my counterpart with the city. I haven't heard back anything about how, about the data, how to get at it or anything like that, and that likely wouldn't be within my purview anyway. But I would, I will get with the relevant staff from our district as well, to reach out to the relevant staff there in order to achieve, hopefully to get that same information to answer the board's question.
So my hope was, to conclude my comments, my hope was that we would be able to have a draft ordinance that this board would be approving on November 14th. Unless we get some earth-shattering information in the next week or so, I don't know that that's going to be the timeline we can still fall under. The hope was our draft ordinance would be approved on November 14th, and we would be requesting an agenda item on the December 5th county commission meeting. I shared that timeline with county staff, as well as at least one, maybe two county commissioners, but it sounds as if we might be in a holding pattern, I guess, until we get some answers. That is not this board member's position. As an individual board member, I would love to stay on that timeline. But I understand that the pleasure of the board is to get answers to these questions before we move forward.
Aside from the two questions that you outlined, are there any questions that the board would have that I should direct toward staff or that you'd like for me to research?
I, I think the primary two questions, I mean, this, Dr. Gullett, it'll be your staff also, is the legality of the...
I was going to say, Madam Chair, could we just back up and reiterate the two questions that the, that the majority of the board wants to see answered, and that we need to talk about by when? And I, I think one of them is going to obviously be Benish, that my staff would reach out to. But can we just, for clarity purposes, go back, I know there's been a lot of conversation, two key questions, and I think Dr. James corrected the first one.
So I, I think one of the questions for sure is the legality of using data apart from property appraiser data for the student generation rate calculation?
Well, yeah, not necessarily the legality, but the, probably the, whether that's appropriate, validity and methodology, right?
Right.
But I'll, I'll answer the legality question, too, along with it.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can't tell you about the validity and methodology, but I can.
Sure. Okay, so for clarity on that, we're not looking at the legality, we're looking at the use of the methodology. We're asking for them to provide their rationale for their methodology. Is that what I understand?
The, the question therein lies, is it plausible to use other data sets apart from property appraiser?
Just want to make sure I'm clear.
Can we use other data sets besides property appraiser?
Yes.
Information? And is there any methodological or legal impediment to doing so?
Yes.
Wonderful.
That is...
Question one.
Primary, primary question, because...
Clear, I just want to be clear.
Absolutely. Because if that question is answered in a way that says, we can't pull other data sets, then I, I think the conversation ends. But if the question is answered in a way that says, yes, you can use other data sets, then we go to additional information from county government, city government, from their building departments. But subsequently, we also would have to get with Benish on what it would look like, the cost and the timeline, to reconfigure the entire study based on the new data provided that's not property appraiser data.
If I can add, regardless of building department data, I think we still want to know a timeline, a timeline and a cost. So even if, even if, I don't want to, I don't want to limit the ask with Benash, they're the expert. So I don't want to say, I want you to use this data set, and I want you to tell me how long it's going to take to do this. I want personally to ask them to, what we're looking for, and they tell us how long and how they could get there. I, I certainly don't want to stand as an expert and tell them and give them explanation as to how they should get to the end.
It is very likely that our staff will need to work with city staff to get at that data and to find out the timeline to be able to get that data for Benash then to analyze. And so there may be two steps to that process. I'm surmising that my, one of those steps is going to be finding out what the data that Benash needs is in order to make these calculations. Number two, finding out how the city can provide it. And then, actually, number three would be the time it takes for Benash to take that raw data and analyze it for the methodology that they need in order to come up with those determinations.
And the alternate option here for Benish, so if we're adding like a subset question, would be, if the answer is no, you can't use additional data, then potentially the information is available in the notes on the property appraiser for each individual building. So that would be a secondary conversation for Benish. If we're unable to use additional data sets, and perhaps the least expensive and quickest way would be for them to analyze existing data that they already have. So that's kind of the initial, another question to be asked of them. So while we're asking, we get all the questions answered. Thank you. Okay. That concludes my comments for this evening. So before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received alternative placement lists for students through September 7th, 2023. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one off air.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 24-009, JD 24-010E, JD 24-003, JD 24-012, JD 24-013, JD 24-014, JD 24-015E, with educational services for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year and the first quarter of the 2024-2025 school year? May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. The meeting will be recessed for our off-air portion. It is now 7:58 PM. Thank you.[1773.36][1773.36][music]